Gotta call the August 5th, 2024 Regular Council Meeting to order. Please stand and...
August 20th.
Huh?
August 20th and 5th.
Oh, shh, I'm looking at the minutes.
August 20th.
August 20th, 2024 Regular Council Meeting to order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Myers.
Here.
LaShawn.
Here.
Shireman is absent. Maritz.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Hickman.
Here.
Me.
Here.
You have the minutes from the August 5th, 2024 Meeting, Regular Council Meeting here. Does anybody have any questions on those minutes?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Myers made a motion to approve. Ms. Sherrick seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They are approved. Granting permission for visitors to speak. First, we have Mr. Mike Keeve, the zoning administrator.
(laughing).
In or out?
Mike Keeve, zoning administrator. I just have a few things to bring up in my report tonight. Recently, the City of Mansfield is allowing the sale of recreational marijuana within the corporation limits. They currently don't have any zoning on the books because they realized it was going to take them too long to go through all the, the whole process of getting it into their ordinance. So they're citing Ohio Revised Code in relationship to the Ohio Board of Marijuana Dispensary Laws. There's a whole chapter in Ohio Administrative Code, in Ohio Revised Code, that pertains to this. There's a whole separate division in the, in the state Commerce. I think it falls under Commerce. And so there's strict guidelines that the dispensaries have to follow. So most of the municipalities are citing that to set their requirements because it's just not us that is behind with the zoning for the dispensaries. I mean, it's pretty much all of them. The only one that I've found so far that's pretty on it is City of Columbus and City of Cincinnati, but majority of Cincinnati is not allowing it. So I also, last week, was approached or called or contacted by a marijuana company that does retail sales as well as medical sales. Company calls Truleave, T-R-U-L-E-I-E-V-E. They have two stores presently in Columbus. One's on Stankis Boulevard, south of Polaris. I'm not sure what the crossroad is, but the other one is in the 3400 block of North High Street, which is, I do believe, two blocks north of Lane by OSU. They also have a store in Beaver Creek, and that is the most recent company that's contacted us to see if we have zoning and if we allow that in the city. After talking to their representative, they said that the Regulatory Board for the Marijuana Control Board is going to be releasing a map of the state. I'm not sure when they were going to release it. I heard it was supposed to be this week or next, that the state is being broken up into regions or districts and that they're going to set aside how many or regulate, how many dispensaries can be in each region or district in the state. And then whatever towns are fall in that region or district, they'll be able to go in and contact the cities or municipalities to see if they can come in. So right now, that's all I have on that because until I talk to the rep tomorrow, I can get a better idea of what this requirements are. Currently, they are in Phase Two of four phases for the rollout for the recreational sales. So I have to get a little bit more information on what steps they are currently at. So, does anyone have any questions on that?
So, based on what you say, what City Mansfield allowing, are there additional steps we would have to take to allow or would it be more that if we don't take steps to disallow?
I'm in contact with Mark, the zoning administrator with the City of Mansfield. He's getting me some information on what they're...
Do you think that you might have a little bit more for our Thursday committee meetings where...
I, I can get the information, but I will not be here Thursday night. So I have a family issue.
Okay. Could you, if you get any information, maybe pass it on to the Health and Safety Chair or any one of us and kind of guide us?
Okay. Would that also fall under plating?
It was in both committees, yeah.
Okay.
But yeah, if you could kind of guide us with what, if any, next steps you believe we should take. For anybody who didn't see it, ABC Six just put out an article this morning that in the first five days, there was $12 million of regulated sales in the state. So for people don't think that this is a big deal, it's a big deal.
Well, the, the one thing that the rep mentioned, that there is some kind of pool or funding source that the taxes that are coming out are going to be put into some kind of fund for whatever municipality that the dispensaries are in. And I kind of got a feeling that almost sounded like a, like a small government's fund for, for, I don't know what use, but maybe for zoning rehab. I'm not sure. So I'm supposed to be planning a video conference call with them in the next day or two, and I'll be in touch with Vicki and Jim on this. So we can get it set up. The next thing is, had some, recently, I had some inquiry by the company that owns Speedway here in town. They're inquiring about zoning information on rehabbing their property, but as of right now, I do not know how that's, what status that is going to be because Circle K is running a purchase of 7-Eleven Speedway nationwide. So I'm not sure how that's going to go, especially with Circle K across the street from Speedway. So, so yeah. On the other... It's downtown business for Speedway. I think that's the last property for downtown business, on the northeast side, anyway. The other current renovation projects that are going through right now is McDonald's, they're doing a prep kitchen area change. Kroger has a pickup area just on the parking lot side of the bakery. I think it's sort of like grocery pickup, like Walmart has. Kroger's going to be doing that. They're setting that up, and also Walmart. The electrical plumbing and the floor and roof contractor permits just came through Thursday, and so those are going to be issued this, this week, and that's about all I got.
Also, do you have an update on the Dollar Store on Lane Street or on the old Swan Building on Mansfield Street?
I'm waiting to hear back on Family Dollar from Richland County Building. And Swan, I, I don't have anything for Swan Building currently. So, anything else? I did receive a call the other day about the Swan Building, and I also heard back from Richland County, and they have not heard back from the representatives of Swan since before the tornado. None of the fees have been paid to Richland County for the review of the proposed plan of the flea market sales area for the first floor, but I don't believe additional information to Richland County from the client's architect, I do not believe has been submitted. So, because they're waiting to hear and they haven't heard anything since right before the tornado. So that's all I know on that property. I have had, received a call about information on the old fire station, but as of right now, I don't have anything I can have available.
What are you, what's the old, what do you call the old fire station?
Plymouth, Plymouth Street.
Newer fire station.
The old.
It's newer than the one here.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, that's all I have. Does any other questions? All right.
Any other public participation? Please come to the podium. State your name and address, please.
Ray, that off 210 Ethel Street. Last week, I heard City Council discussing something that just didn't make any sense to me, and everyone knows we need fire trucks, police cars, and if the levy doesn't pass, we're going after the out-of-town workers again. Well, last week, City Council was discussing the sale of the North End Fire Station, and I believe in the same breath, they were discussing purchasing the old YMCA. And I just don't see how that makes any sense to get funds from selling a building and then put them in another rundown building that we don't need, possibly for a few parking spaces. I, I feel the city needs to run like any household would run. If I get income, I stash that income. I don't spend it before I even get it. And the way it was talked about last week, they're wanting to purchase, the city's wanting to purchase a building, won't even have the funds for it yet. And if the levy doesn't pass, like I said, they're going after the out-of-town workers. But yet, we're going to purchase a building we don't need. It just doesn't make any sense. Anybody have a comment?
I, I was going to, so when we got to the Public Lands and Buildings Standing Committee reports, I was going to go in depth and explain that situation.
What's there to explain? We're spending money we don't even have yet, and then we're going to go after the out-of-town workers if the levy doesn't pass.
So...
That's just stupid.
Let's, let's wait, and you can come up and address after that report, if you want to address after you hear my, what I was going to say about it.
I'm sure my opinion won't change, but I'll stick around. Thanks.
Any other public participation? Seeing none, Standing Committee reports, Plating Committee, Mr. Me. Anybody have questions for Plating Committee?
Mr. President, we have a letter from the Traffic Commission.
Oh, apologize, I've totally skipped over a section here. We have received a communication and petition from the Traffic Commission dated August 8th, 2024. Miranda, can you read that, please?
Yes, sir. Dear Health and Safety Committee, the City of Bezzar, the City of Bezzar's Traffic Commission would like to recommend one amendment to the traffic control map to add the stop sign on Pearl Street. Sincerely, Bruce D. Trucco, Traffic Commission.
Now, don't we normally refer these to health and safety? So do we want to make this...
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Maritz seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Moving on to Standing Committee reports, Plating Committee already said he didn't have a report. Did anybody have questions for the Plating Committee? Seeing none, Public Lands and Buildings Committee, Ms. Sherrick.
Well, from the sounds of it, you're hijacking this report, so go ahead.
No, I'm gonna let you do it, and if you miss anything, I'll...
Nope, I literally just gave you the floor.
You can, it's your committee, you can tell us about it.
Kurt. Quit wasting your waste time.
Erin, I'm not wasting any time here. I'm letting you give your committee report. You're not going to give a report?
I literally just gave you the floor. You sat here for another two minutes.
Okay. Since Ms. Sherrick won't give her report, I will, because this is a huge situation, or not situation, but it's, it's a big endeavor of the city to sell property and acquire property, and the North End Fire Station has been in committee for a while now, and I kind of was hesitant to sell that property until one day, I was sitting in the mayor's office and it got brought up again, what are we doing with the North End Fire Station? And I said, I'm not really for selling that, but then I started thinking, wait a minute, I'd just seen this YMCA property go up for listing with Katona Realty like that week. And I, I thought, you know, over the years, I had, 20 years ago, I started hanging out at the fire station back when I was 17, and it was brought up a couple of times, just interacting with the firemen. I said, what would you guys ever do here if you wanted to do EMS? I said, there's not enough room in here to, you know, add much more equipment. It was kind of like, well, we don't know. At that time, the Ziegler Electrical Building was an empty gas station a lot, so that kind of was thrown out there. Within a couple of years later, Ziegler Electrical bought that and rehabbed it, so now, you know, it's back to the fire station as landlocked again. And, you know, moving forward to now, so I, I've known this, it's been on my mind for years. So then, this YMCA building comes up for sale, and I said, well, wait a minute. I'm like, we're trying to figure out if we're going to sell this North End Fire Station or not, but we don't really know what we're going to replace it with. But then I said, well, wait a minute, what if we sold the North End Fire Station and then bought this adjacent property right next to the, where the firemen are operating out of now? And then you could merge those two properties together in some way, whether it be as simple as tearing it down and having a parking lot for a while, or potentially adding on to the building in the future. And immediately, within, I mean, it, it was literally that same day, I, I said, we, I told the mayor, I said, we need to call the Public Lands and Buildings Chair, Ms. Sherrick, and bring her in on this, because I said, this is something that needs to be fully disclosed to council throughout the entire process. And so we called you, Ms. Sherrick, that day, and me and the mayor and you had a conversation, and it led to us continuing to have that conversation through full council per the, I mean, the procedures that we had to go through to discuss it, which involved executive session, and that has got to where we are now, where the committee, at the last Public Lands Building Committee, voted to advertise for bid, the, there's some land around Wendy's and this North End Fire Station that were, I mean, they're storing some equipment in it, but they're not using it as far as the firemen staying there and operating out of it. So I knew it was going to be brought up, and this was brought up and passed. Where are we getting the money? Well, the auditor informed us that there's a specific line item in the budget, it has to do with when you dispose properties, that money goes into this account or line, and she said there's like $50,000 in it now from, must have been selling something in the past. And then we looked at, well, we're, we're wanting to list two separate things around Wendy's with a minimum bid of $40,000 each, and this North End Fire Station is being listed, if it passes, full council with a minimum bid of like $262,500. So if you, you know, add all that money together, we get to where we're at with, you know, we'll be able to potentially purchase the YMCA building because we've, they've already come up with a price, and we'll have quite a bit left over to do. I mean, we're not planning on rehabbing that old building. The, the plan was talked about of demolishing it. I mean, it's an old building, I don't see what, you just don't want to try to do something with that. But once you, you have a property, it opens the doors to, can we apply for grants to add on to the station? Because we took on the EMS, and that brought a lot more equipment in there, and we're in a situation at that station now where it's, it's operating at, it's full. It's full, the guys are sleeping in there, there's more employees in there every night, and it's just crowded. So that's what this whole thing was about. It was originally going to be potentially legislation tonight to dispose of the other properties at public auction and authorize purchasing the other, but since we don't have a law director right now, there's no, we don't have anybody to draft up that legislation and legally, with a law degree, approve of bringing it before council here. So it's not going to get passed tonight regarding the properties, but I just wanted to make sure that the public is fully aware of the whole thing with the properties. And, and I will say, us reaching out to Public Lands and Buildings Chair immediately when the idea was first thought up, just goes to show the level of transparency that this administration is trying to have with this council, because in the past, with previous administrations, there's been situations where something of this magnitude would be in the works, but council was never included until it would get to like a deadline that needed voted on, and then it would, it would be thrown in the council's lap in one meeting and rush, 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 you guys got to be voting on it now. And so we feel that, and I feel that, I mean, we're, we're doing the right thing by the way we handled this, you know, bringing the Public Lands and Buildings Chair in on it immediately from the beginning, bringing every council member in on it within the week after, at the next meeting. And is there anything else you'd like to add to that, Erin?
Oh, yes. I did receive a phone call immediately, I'm sure. However, I did give you ideas of what people would say about it, and asked about other options, including the fact that people will think that you're taking away yet another landmark building, that there could be another roller skating rink that could go in, that there were other things that could happen. I also asked you if you were looking into this, if you would contact the building directly behind, since we're still landlocked with just those two buildings, which I have yet to ever hear about that. So, yeah. So since you spun that from 7/17 to 7/25, that short story was not quite short, and that would be the end of my, um, report.
And, and I will agree, Erin did, she expressed some concerns. One concern was, we're closing up a skating rink, what are the kids going to do? And I said, hey, I said, this skating rink, it, it struggled for years. The guy that owns it, he said he was selling it because he can't, it's hard to keep it operating, the money and stuff, and I personally, I don't feel like, I feel like that building, it's, there's been multiple people own it, tried to make a go at it, and it never seems to, you know, it's always been struggling. So, you know, the, the parcel size is, is exact same as the fire station now. We'd basically be doubling our land right there, and, because see, here's, here's the other thing, okay? The other thing was pitched out at some point, well, just, just, let's just build a new fire station. Well, a new fire station, you're probably talking five-plus million, and that would require going to the voters and passing, like, there's just no other way the city could afford a five-plus million-dollar station. So that's why we're, we're trying to do things the conservative way here and be mindful of the taxpayers' money by acquiring this other property at nowhere near that $5 million cost and potentially being able to add on to it and be able to fulfill our, fulfill our needs better at a much, much lower cost than that $5 million. So I appreciate, Ray, your concerns. Yeah, come, come up here, Ray. It's...
The city does not need to get rid of one old dilapidated building to buy another old dilapidated building. You keep talking about the taxpayers' money and stuff. You're going to come after the out-of-town workers again. For what? For an old dilapidated building that you're going to pay $100,000 for? Probably pay another 40 grand to tear it down for a couple parking spaces. It's ridiculous.
Ray, I, I really would like to take you on a tour up there at the fire station and just see how they're operating right now.
The City of Bezzar is losing people every year. The population's going down, and you're telling me we need more beds at the fire station? We need more parking at the fire station? We got junk stored up at the North End. We're going to sell that building and make $200, maybe, $1,000, and you're wanting to spend it before we even get it. That's, that's ridiculous. Tell that to that 1,700 people, the out-of-town workers, when you come after their tax credit again.
Well, okay, so the sale of real estate, that money doesn't, I'm not 100% sure, but I believe it, it has to be put into a fund that can only be spent on other real estate.
That's fine.
So we couldn't use that money, unless I'm misspeaking right now, to operate a fire department or a police department with their annual salaries and things like that. So this, this, this is two separate things, like operating and one-time purchases. You got capital expense, OPEX, operating expenses. You're trying to merge this all together into one thing when it's, it's not going, one doesn't affect the other.
So put it in a fund, leave it in that fund. Like I said, you're trying to spend it before you even get it. We're going to need that money. You can smile and laugh all you want to, but what you're saying don't mean squat to me. It don't mean squat to these 1,700 people that are going to come after. It don't mean squat to these 1,700 people that are going to come after. They're going to say, you just spent that 150 grand on a, a piece of property and now you're coming after our tax credit. Put the money in the bank like I would if I had it. I'm not going to run out and spend it right after I, before I get it. It's just stupid.
I, I understand what you're saying, Ray. Ray, I, I understand what you're saying. But have you been to the fire station since they've taken over the EMS?
What's that got to do with two dilapidated old buildings?
We have to ensure that we have adequate facilities to support our safety services. Okay? That building was never built with the intention of doing EMS out of it. It is currently doing EMS out of it now and fire services.
Right.
Okay? It's.
Seems to be working.
Well, the building's full and all of their equipment is not in it. Part of their equi, their equipment is in the other station. We'd, we'd like to get all of their equipment on one property. What's, what's that?
Let's keep the North End Fire Station then. Why are we selling it?
Well, I asked the chief about that. And the thing is, okay, so are you going to staff it and put personnel there or?
Maybe we should.
Are they just going to have to, okay, we got a call that just came in and it's this specific type of call and the equipment that we need for that call, it's over at the other building.
Kind of like when they're shopping at Walmart in the ambulance, same difference.
It's easier to provide an emergency service when all of the equipment that the personnel needs is all in the same building that the personnel's at.
You're never going to convince me, Kirk, that we should spend that money.
What do you think on the $5 million for the new station?
Say that again?
What do you think on the $5 million for the new station?
Who said we're building a new station? The old one's going to need a new roof and where are we going to get the money with that? For that, if we spend it on the YMCA building?
So the, the levy that's on the ballot this fall, Ray, can be.
It may or may not pass.
That is correct. It, it can be used for facility maintenance.
I thought we were buying fire trucks and police cars with that.
It's, it can do, it can do all of that. It can do all that. The way it's worded, it can do equipment. There were some upgrades down here in the dispatch center they wanted to do and some things. So, you know, that, that roof that you just mentioned.
It doesn't pass. You done spent the money on the YMCA building, then you're coming after the out of town tax credit. Bottom line.
But you're, you're confusing a capex expense and an op, OPEX expense. It's not, one doesn't affect the other.
I'm just saying, it's a dumb idea to buy that property.
You can't take money out of, just like you can't take money out of the enterprise funds and put it in a general fund.
Run the city like you would your house. Quit spending, put it in the savings, keep it for a while. Don't spend it if you don't have it yet.
There's more people who would like to ask questions now?
Please come up to the podium.
Thank you. Actually, I have a concern about this also, now that you brought a lot of that up. Do I need my name or?
Name, address.
Angela Fishpod, 455 Sierra Street here in Bucyrus. That skating rink you're talking about, my kids grew up there through Coste Myers and through Thuramans. Excellent place. Both, the Thuramans put a ton and ton of money into that skating rink. It is in actually really, really decent condition inside. My big concern with two different things, when you keep saying about your spending costs and everything. I do marketing for the Ohio Attorney General, so I kind of know about merchandising and marketing and things like that, okay? So if you've got this firehouse way out here that you want to sell, okay? I don't know what kind of condition is, what kind of equipment you keep in there. I have to urge your fire department, so I know what you're talking about as far as that goes. So if you're worried about how it's overstaffed over here, put your EMS people that you've got sleeping over here and it's overcrowded, keep them out there. Let them do their EMS stuff. I understand sometimes they're needed for the fire department. Separate them. Don't sell your building. Keep your money. Why aren't you more concerned about keeping a place for children in this town? There are nowhere for kids to go in this town. I have five children that grew up in this town and I have four grandchildren that's growing up in this town. There is nothing for kids in this town to do because the city doesn't give a shit about it. Sorry, doesn't care about it. But you're caring more about, yes, saving lives and fires, I get all that. That's extremely important. That's like, should be top of the list and I understand all that. But you want to tear down a perfectly good skating rink. Why doesn't, if you want to buy something, buy it. I'm not saying that I disagree with the fact that it's the same type of parcel and that it does make sense in a long term, okay, for you to have that there for the fire department. I get that. Because it does make sense on one end, but on the other, what are you going to do with that building? Why don't you turn that in for something for the kids? There's nothing in this town for the kids to do in the city except go to a park. What else?
What building are you just, which building are you referring to?
Well, you're talking about the, the fire department out there. If you're not going to divide up your people, because you say this one's overcrowded, but they've got equipment out there, then divide your people up. That makes it so less overcrowded over here, where EMS is out here, the city's EMS, and you have your fire department over here. I mean, I don't understand why you can't just do that instead of spending extra money.
So the, the fire personnel and the EMS personnel, and Kevin, you, you're way more knowledgeable on this than I am, but aren't they crossing over?
They cross man the equipment.
Oh, and I understand that.
Yeah. So, you know.
Average of six people on duty at a time.
Right.
You know, in essence, first two go out on an ambulance call, that leaves you four people left.
Right, and I understand your fire department.
You might need the engine next, you might need another medic call next. So, yeah, that's part of the issue with that.
Okay, but you, you just got in saying how they're overstaffed, you've got more people staying there, equipment's out here.
I think what he's.
You said overstaffed, you said over.
I think what he's getting at was, the, the building was built, I believe, in 1908.
Okay, overcrowded or staffed is how I took that, so I apologize.
It, it was built with horses in mind. And, you know, half the, one of the reasons that that station on Plymouth Street was built was because the ladder truck that they had ordered in 1977 was too heavy for the wooden floor. And, and the other reason was we didn't have the extent, extension on Plymouth Street yet. And so railroad traffic was a lot more through town back in the seventies. Those were the reasons that was built in 1977. Less train traffic now and they filled in the floor with concrete wherever.
So, okay, so back to the main question then. Why do you have to get rid of that building? Why do you have to sell it? I, I don't understand. What is the, the rush to sell a building that's actually being used? If it's still in, you fixed it, right? You said it's in good condition.
What all is being stored in that building right now? Tommy?
Old engine, building, a trailer, and, um, another trailer.
There was a mass casualty trailer.
So my question to that is, with him saying that, is that equipment that's used? And if it's not, why not just sell the equipment and reuse the building?
Those two trailers are there in the case of a major emergency, a hazmat incident or a mass casualty.
Oh, hazmat, gotcha.
So the one trailer is a hazmat trailer, there's a mass casualty trailer. So if you have an incident that's extremely large, there's a lot of equipment in there that would only be used at that time. Hopefully, we never use it. To my knowledge, the, the mass casualty trailer's never been used since we obtained it, which is, is good. The hazmat trailer's been used a couple times.
So if you sell, so let's say you sell this building and you tear down the skating rink. Is there ever going to be a proposal or anything that, for kids to go to then in this town? Because there's nothing. I remember the building that is M&M now, over on Mary, or not, well, it's Mary, whatever that is, Spring Street. For a long time, when I first moved here, the city comes, oh, yeah, we're going to make that for the kids. Nothing ever happened. It got sold to M&M, to Matt Hensley. So, I mean, I can understand why you want it there, but like she said, there's a building right behind the fire department. Why don't you try to utilize that property instead of tearing down a place that children go to? And if the city really wants to spend their money, invest in your children in this community instead of making, I mean, I know the bicycle table didn't have anything to do with the city, that park.
Would you be willing to buy the YMCA building and open it up as a skating rink?
Sure. Get me a loan. Help me out. Co-sign for me. I'll go for it in a heartbeat.
You and Erin together?
Hey, we on board, Erin? My grandson loves you, by the way. Can't wait till tomorrow. I'm just saying, I understand what you're saying. But, and you have to look at it from the community and taxpayer and people who have children in this community's point of view. There are literally nothing for kids to do in this community. And it seems like the city is more about doing this, this, and this. Let's put out a park, let's put out a bike thing. I mean, what are you guys doing at Old Miller? You know what I mean? The kids aren't utilizing any of that stuff. It's for, say, face value, basically, for the city.
So we're, we're looking out for the, the long term, what we need to do to be able to provide these services to the city. And, um, this is a once, it's not very often that when you're landlocked, that a property adjacent to you comes up that could benefit you in order to be able to provide better services. And that, that's why this whole thing got brought up. And if, if the skating rink was profitable, would he be selling it? I, I don't know. You know?
I don't know that it's not profitable.
If somebody wants to open another skating rink in the Zonia Roadway over there, I highly encourage them to go talk to him and.
Yeah, I'm not saying that it's not profitable for Mr. Thuram and I know him and his wife actually personally. It's more of the fact that they have become extremely more disabled. And that's why they're selling. It's not because it's not profitable business. Yes, because COVID things did hurt them, but that place was booming before COVID. And it's still in immaculate condition inside. So you're willing to shut down a building where kids have fun at?
Well, it's shut down now.
It is shut down now, yes. Because like I said, COVID kind of helped kill that, unfortunately. And they, they have not, because of illnesses and everything else, been able to open it back up.
So let me just spin this another way. What if it, what if we don't buy it and nobody ends up buying it and it just sits there dilapidated for the next 20 years?
And that's a danger. I can see both ways. Please don't get me wrong in what I'm saying. I understand the safety of our community. I completely do. But I also see where, I've been living, I've lived here now for 16 years in the city of Bucyrus, okay? I came from Findlay, a community that was all about their next generation and still is, okay? Your community, I moved here because I got transferred, and your community is not about your next generation. It absolutely hasn't been for 16 years that I've lived here. And I can honestly say that. Because there has not been one thing besides that skating rink for children to do in this community. And people are always complaining, oh, kids are down here causing more havoc down here, they're doing more crap at the fountain, they're doing this, they're vandalizing at the park. Well, why wouldn't they? I mean, not that I condone it, but.
I would disagree that children didn't have anything to do this summer because Jennifer alone has, has turned that pool around.
I'm not saying this summer Jennifer's a great person, she's actually a very personal friend of mine.
I, I really think we had, that the kids had a really good time this summer.
Oh, and I'm not saying they didn't this year. Don't get me wrong. I, when we first moved here, I, I utilized that pool, okay? And Jennifer is a very close friend of mine. So yes, I agree. She did do an amazing job this year, where the city should have stepped up over the past few years to take control of that. That's not your administration's fault. Okay? That's the previous administration's fault. Either way, here or there, I said my piece on it. I, it, I can see both sides of it, but I also think you really need to reconsider it before you go forward with it.
Any final for Public Lands and Buildings? If, if somebody wants to comment on the Public Lands and Buildings issue, you can come up.
Hope y'all just called that, caught that. My entire leg was numb. Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Route 4. I think I've said this like, I don't know how many times. I am so empathetic to you guys because I've come up here so much and I see what all you're dealing with. You've inherited a cluster. I mean, what else to say? Everything's been kicked out of the road. You know, the first meeting of the year was terrible to watch and I just would hate to be you guys.
Is this related to Public Lands and Buildings?
This is related. However, if it's not there, if the money is not there, it's like just because something seems like a steal, and maybe I'm thinking about personally, and I am really motivated to buy something, doesn't mean that I should be buying it and putting the cart before the horse. If the money's not there, I, I'm not sure what we're do, what we're doing here. I mean, I get that it's a problem and foresight has not been this city's strong point for decades. I mean, I just can't see buying a building, tearing it down, and still not really having good egresses. You still don't have, you have one egress, and it's Mansfield Street. You're not going to be able to turn around a fire truck through the, through the alley. It's going to still be landlocked if you make that a parking lot. What do they say?
Well, and that's, that's, I think they can exit out of the back and go out that alley right there, can't they, Mr. Myers?
Yeah. And they do with some of the.
Yeah, there's sometimes, they usually, didn't they used to park an engine in that back bay?
The tri-tachip tanker.
So I'm going to sound really callous because I am supportive of the levy. However, I've looked and requested how much these firemen are making. And I know some of it's, a lot of it's from overtime. I used to be a union gal myself. I know how these things work and I know you guys are locked to your union contract until negotiations again. I understand that you have to pay them what you're paying, you have to have the minimum staffing that you're having. You guys are kind of stuck like Chuck. I get that. You can't tell them, you know, to cut back on their staffing. I get that too. But if I was making six figures and making almost three times the average salary of Bucyrus, and I was worried about being crowded in a building, they're going to have to be resourceful. They're being compensated for the situations that they're in. And I'm, I understand, but I just feel it's not, I feel like it's a Band-Aid to a problem that you're going to end up having again in the future because has anyone talked to the police? Because I had a discussion with Chief Ostenheimer that their, you know, concerns is that they're outgrowing their space down there. Their door's rotting out. They had someone come in to service the dispatch and said, this is the smallest and worst dispatch I've seen in the state.
Well, that rotting door is, was, that's part of that levy.
Part of the equipment, I understand that. But then we're still back to square one. If, it's, it's going to, as, as a short-term fix, that I don't think is going to be a long-term solution.
So you think we should build a brand-new combined fire and police station building? Is that where you're heading with this, or?
Correct. It's going to be a long-term, it's a long-term problem that, that needs a long-term solution, not a short-term Band-Aid.
How much do you think that would cost to build that?
I know it's going to be expensive. I didn't say it wasn't. But again, I have a group of 12 young women with various experiences professionally that are starting a nonprofit to help organizations, businesses, government agencies, volunteering their time to research and find grants. And I reached out to administration, I haven't heard anything about working collectively. You have people in this community that are willing to put in the time to find solutions. Yeah, we don't have any sort of like think tank on how to find it. I, I just don't see this being a long-term solution. It's just, it, you're still going to have things you're kicking down the road. And then you're going to have another building or another piece of land that now you, what do they say? I'm just thinking about, first thing I thought of was a, they tore down Paradise and put up a parking lot. Like, we're just, we're tearing down another building. Like, we have hardly, you know, we have not preserved our historical buildings in this town historically. We, we just, we tear them down, we disregard them, and then my kids are going to be lucky if there's anything original.
So the, the North End Fire Station, because of it not having people staffed out of that building constantly, there was an issue, was it last winter that the pipes burst and froze? And it ended up, I don't know if we had to pay that or if the insurance paid that, but that's, when you have these properties that don't have personnel working out of them constantly, you have issues like that, maintenance things. And, you know, we're looking at the long-term fire and EMS for this area. And, you know, we, we have a very good EMS service being ran by the Bucyrus Fire Department right now.
I'm not, I'm not taking, I'm not taking that away from them either. But what I'm saying is that you're, you're selling one building to store, to store stuff in in another building until they decide to tear it down. But then you're still going to have to put up probably like a pole barn. I mean.
No, we're not. I would highly not be for a pole barn. And I'll tell you why. Because when tornadoes and things like that come through, then pole barns don't hold up that well. I mean, look how long that that brick and mortar fire station has lasted now.
I know, but if you're going to need the space to store. I know, but if you're going to need the space to store trailers, equipment, is, there's no, there's no solution right now. There, there, like if you go in and you tear it down and you're going to build what? So another brick and mortar building? How much is that?
No, I'm not saying there's going to be another building. I would, I would say maybe look into, can that building be added on? Add another couple bays? And then you still have some more parking spaces, you know, you could maybe strategically do something that takes care of the parking problem they have back there right now. Add a couple more bays. Maybe we acquire the property and somebody like happened over in Shelby decides, hey, I'm going to donate several million dollars to Bucyrus City because I'm a wealthy business owner in the community and I'm going to build them a new, you know, take care of some station or something they need. We, we
Why aren't you looking at, why aren't you looking at any land-ready buildings? I mean, I mean, why does it have to be this building? Why isn't like the kime, old kime lumber, like ready to build on land?
Well, so that was brought up with the chief and so I actually personally asked some of the firemen how, how they felt about getting into a whole new station someday. And they said, we like the, we like the area we're in. We we're close to downtown, you know, you move it out there where that kime is, you're kind of in a residential neighborhood right across the street. And then the trucks leaving all the time, they're going to be turning the sirens on and it, right next to people's residences. So that was thought of and
It's a block away from where it is now.
Yeah, but there's, there's no residences directly across the street from where they're at now, like there would be at the kime property.
But there's people right behind that live at the fire, like
Yeah, but the trucks pull out the front door most of the time.
I know, but I'm talking about volume-wise, it's not, I mean, I feel like we're arbitrarily arguing that. I I'm just saying that you're going to build on a building the same size that it had, that you're going to have now because you're saying the same lot. So you're going to have the space to build on half of it maybe and then have parking or whatever your plan is. There's no draft. There's no plan or and how much is that going to cost? And then you're going to be stuck there. And then the police are still going to need different facilities at some point.
Have you been in the fire station?
I have been in the fire station. I grew up a block from the fire station. I know it's crowded in there. I'm just saying that I just feel like this is, I was jokingly saying this to somebody that was like bubble gum and
Let me throw another scenario out there.
Paperclips is what I feel like we're just throwing at the city.
Let me throw another scenario out there. Our fire, our EMS service is so good and we're working so well with townships. What if the townships down the road came to us and said, hey, we'd like to get more services from you?
Then you're going to be landlocked again. That's my point. Like you, you're going to build on additional bays.
We did, there's no plan to build on now. It's, that was just an idea.
That's the problem.
We, we had an opportunity to acquire property and
And destroy it.
Get, take the money from the Wendy's ones and add that to what we already got. And we, and then we got the money to do it. And I think we could even potentially do it and still keep the North End Fire Station for now, but the committee voted to put that out to bid, but
I think the biggest concern is it feels like you're just going to buy it to tear it down. And, and not, and, and you have this plan
We're not buying it to, to open a skating rink. We're, the city's not going to
Well, you're right. You're not going to rehabilitate it.
Pouring money into an old building like that would not be wise.
Right. So that's where I think people are going to be at a very heated disagreement with you. I don't know if you remember the whole elementary school building, people getting really worked up about that or the old high school were down on, oh, it's by East Street. What, who wrote this up? Woodlawn, thank you. I'm, my whole point is, it doesn't
This whole idea is to avoid us getting into the, possibly having to build a five-plus million dollar station. If, if that's the route you want to go.
It's still kicking it down the road though.
Maybe, maybe, you know, we're, we're not passing anything tonight. I hope that the media gets this all out there that the property, you know, I, I had reached out to media. I hadn't seen an article yet. I wanted them to get it out that the, this is what the city was thinking about doing. And I haven't seen anything yet, but maybe that'll come out after this meeting tonight. But you know, we're trying to be transparent with everything we're doing with this. There's nothing planned. There's no drawings. It's just, we're at the situation where we can potentially buy another piece of property with selling up some properties that aren't doing anything for us and not have to ask for money to acquire this stuff because we'll have the money if we sell the other ones. And you know, it'll give us some options in the future for what we may want to do if something comes up, you know? Somebody might pass away and donate their whole inheritance to the city or something.
I know. I'd be like, that's what we'll think. If we're not
We want you to give all that money to the police and the fire department.
If we're not fighting and
But if we don't own the property, we can't do it.
But if you own the property and tear it down, that, that's not what other everyone else is envisioning. What I'm just saying is that you have a lot of smart people in this town, a lot of smarter than me, a lot of smarter people in this room. You have a lot of resources and I just feel like this, this is just another short-term solution that's going to be kicked down the road for someone else to figure out.
I mean, wouldn't it be a wiser taxpayer expense to spend, go with an option that is well under a million dollars to do something, take care of your needs than to go the option that's going to cost five million?
But if it's going to be in need in five years anyway, and we're in this budget crisis, it just doesn't, like, I'm not saying they're, they're managing. And I hate to say this, I don't want to sound really, but you're making six figures. People would kill to make that money around here. I mean, you got service, you got service members
You know what a fireman has to do to make the six figures?
I know, but I want to say you got service members making $50,000 that are deployed sleeping on rocks. But you're making twice that amount. You know what you signed up for. I mean, it's just, I'm sorry. Like, I just, it's
So there, there's a lot of overtime, you're right. There's, there's a lot of overtime in the fire department. So part of the overtime, you avoid having to hire an additional employee and pay the benef, the health insurance and all that. So it's actually cheaper
In the short term.
To do the overtime. So a fireman is making, I, I've heard it. I've, people have said this, oh, they're making over a hundred thousand dollars. You got to work two days on, get one day home with your family. And then two more days on, get one day home with your family.
I understand that.
They're sacrificing a lot.
I'm not saying that they're not sacrificing.
For your safety.
Okay. We don't have to be chastising. I'm not saying they're not sacrificing. What I'm saying is this is just another temporary solution. And you're going to be quick to tear that building down and build another building. And you're not going to have, it's not going to be like an overnight thing. Why don't we plan this out, think it through, not make rash decisions? Just because it's on sale doesn't mean you have to buy it.
Well, it's not like you can go to Walmart and buy a property that's not on a shelf. I mean, you're kind of in a situation where properties aren't always for sale. And when they are for sale, you got to make the best judgment call when they are. You know?
But it's going to be another bubble gum and paperclip solution to a long-term problem.
I don't think that the, a short, I don't think that's a short-term solution. I, I think you could add on to that existing station with the same quality-type build materials that originally built that station and get another 100 years out of it. I, I really think you can't.
I'd really like to see that estimate.
And this, this comes from somebody that owns commercial property and maintains commercial property.
I'd like to see that estimate.
Okay, we're going to move on.
Thank you.
To the unless, and Erin, did you have any closing thoughts on the public lands and buildings? None? Health and Safety Committee Chair, Mrs. DeShawn, any report?
The Health and Safety Committee met on August 8th and we discussed the TNR Trap Neuter Return Program, marijuana dispensaries, food trucks, and sex offenders and spaces for children and families. End of my report.
Anybody have any questions for the Health and Safety Committee? I did see a stray cat wandering yesterday in the mulch here around City Hall. And it made me think of the TNR. So, moving on. Finance Committee, Mr. Myers?
Legislation that has been requested by this committee is on hold due to not having a law director currently to be able to finalize that. So everything that was requested, hopefully will be able to be prepared for our meeting in two weeks. And that is the end of my report.
Any questions for Finance Committee Chair? Seeing none. Economic Development Chair, Mr. Hickman?
I'm not sure if a lot of people know. David Zach, the CEO and President of the Partnership is leaving. I believe August 23rd to become the next President and CEO of the Ohio Economic Development Group. I forgot the whole name of it. We appreciate David Zach's service to the city. He has done an immense job. I would not want his job. And we look forward to who takes his spot in the future. And we look forward to working with the Partnership for years to come. The end of my report.
Any questions for Economic Development? Mrs. DeShawn?
We don't have a question. But as a member of the Economic Development Committee, at the last committee meeting, I had reported out that Casey Grau would be speaking at our committee meeting this Thursday, letting us know what the Bucyrus Tourism and Visitors Bureau has been and will be doing. Her presentation has been rescheduled and she'll be speaking to our committee on September the 19th.
Ms. Sherrit?
Also another question. I believe that's for the going-away party for Mr. Zach.
That's correct. Yes.
Who I would also like to say has done a fabulous job. He's been amazing. It's the first time we've, we've had somebody working that hard for our communities. I appreciate everything he's done.
He's going to be hard to replace.
Yes.
His replacement looks good.
Any final questions for Economic Development? Moving on. Service Committee Chair, Mr. Moritz?
We finally might have something to discuss on Thursday with Title IX. Ordinances, hopefully. That we can bring up. That's it.
Any questions for Service Committee? Seeing none. The Special Ad-Hoc Committee that Mrs. DeShawn is the chair of?
The Special Ad-Hoc Committee for Rules of Procedure for Bucyrus City Council, Bucyrus Codified Ordinance Chapter 111 Council Rules of Council and Bucyrus Codified Ordinance Chapter 113 Ordinances and Resolutions met on August the 19th, at which time we discussed changes to the rules of procedure and proposed ordinance number 11-2024, which contains the Bucyrus Codified Ordinance Chapters 111 and 113. End of my report.
Any questions for the Ad-Hoc Committee? Seeing none. Special Ad-Hoc Committee that Mr. Me is the chair of? No report. Any questions for the Special Ad-Hoc Committee? I did see an email where one of the committee members sent in said they're stepping down from being on that committee. It was one of the members from the general public, wasn't one of the members on council. Traffic Commission, Mr. Starner, did you want to give a report on that?
I think the mayor did for the, for the stop sign.
That's the letter that we already accepted and filed?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for the Traffic Commission? Seeing none. Need a motion to accept the committee reports collectively?
Second.
Ms. Sherrit made a motion. Mr. Moritz seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Report of city officers? Okay, Mayor did not have a report. We're going to move on to the Safety Service Director's report. Mr. Starner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did not submit a report prior to 4:30 tonight. And it's kind of lengthy. I guess I have a lot to say. And I apologize for that. I want to take the time this evening to let everyone know that Mayor Truka is doing well after his knee surgery. I did talk to him right prior to coming in. He's, uh, his biggest complaint right now is his throat still hurts from being innovated. So the Allmiller Park Swimming Pool went well this year. I personally want to thank all the pool donors, the pool manager Jennifer Alonis for making this swim, swim season a success. The administrators and city foremans have finished the revised 900 series of the qualified ordinance. And we are turning it back to the Service Committee for final approval. The administration submitted an application for the PUCO Supplement Assistance Grant on Monday, August 19, 2024, for $21,000 to update all the railroad crossings throughout the city. The reminder that the FEMA grant was used to demolish the house on Lane Street was closed with the city owing nothing. The land bank assisted us in the final expenses on the project. The test wells that on the land behind Kroger's have been cleared by the U.S. EPA. They have since been removed and the city is starting to backfill or fill in the low spots so the crew can reach the proper equipment or reach with the proper equipment to clean the Buffalo River line. The administrator, administration will like to announce that this year's deer lottery is now open. If you would like to participate, please, please contact the mayor's office with your name, address, and phone number. And the Spooktacular will be held this year at Crawford County Fairgrounds on Saturday, October 19th between 3:00 and 6:00. Ask Me is looking for donations and willing, and those willing to donate may write a check to Ask Me. Attention, Spooktacular. Thank you.
Any questions for Service Director? Ms. Sherrit?
Why is it at the fairgrounds? Did they outgrow the park or?
This was a decision made last year. They talked to the Fairgrounds Board. They allowed us to do it. Why? We're going to try it one year, see how it goes and go from there.
That's another wonderful activity that the kids can do in this town. Any other questions for Service Director? Seeing none. I move on to the auditor's report. She is not here tonight, but she asked for a referral to Finance Committee as an emergency for transfers and property appropriate appropriations for the purchase of purchasing real estate.
I'll make a motion for her transfers and appropriations for the purpose of purchasing real property to Finance Committee.
Ms. Sherrit made the motion. Mr. Hickman seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Treasurer's report dated July 2024 is in your packet. Need a motion to accept and file?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrit seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fire Chief has a June report, fire and EMS, June 2024 snapshot. And the July fire and EMS in July 2024 snapshot. Need a motion to accept and file?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrit seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Visitors input regarding standing special committees and city officers? Any more visitor input? Seeing none. Okay, so this legislation was put in the packet because we originally thought we had a deadline to make. This is for the OPWC grant, this Resolution 227-2024. We have since found out that the deadline is actually September 27th. So this, this legislation that's in the packet now was not reviewed by any legal counsel. It was between Vicki and Alyssa down in the law director's office was able to come up with what's here. And it was kind of just taking some old one that was in the past and they changed some dates and stuff, I believe. But since then But since then, we found out the deadline is not as early as we thought. We potentially wouldn't need to pass it tonight. So, that would give us more time to potentially have a law director, an interim law director in the meantime, review it. So, did you wanna make a motion, Vicky, to pull this?
Did we just skip some steps?
What are you talking about?
Like, the motion to accept city officers' reports as a whole and the visitors' inputs regarding...
I thought I just, I thought I did that.
No, you just jumped straight from the fire chief's report.
Well, we had a, I asked for visitors' input, I know I did that.
Well, I saw.
Well, just in case I didn't do the accepting of the reports, any motion to accept the city officer's reports?
And I'll second that.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherret seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, back to this legislation, proposed Resolution 227-2024, OPWC grant. Vicky, did you wanna comment on that at all?
No.
So, do we wanna, since we didn't have legal counsel review this, do we wanna send it back to committee, since we don't have the deadline we thought?
Well, and that's service.
Service, yeah.
That's not my committee. I'm not on that committee, so I wouldn't be the one, you asked if I wanted to...
Give me a motion to send it back to committee.
Okay. Chris, it's your committee, you wanna?
I'll make a motion to send it back to me.
I'll second.
Mr. Moritz made the motion, Mr. Hickman seconded, to send Resolution 227-2024 back to committee, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, so, that is no longer on the agenda. That takes us to old and unfinished business. We had a discussion last meeting about Bratwurst Festival and a petition to stop it by a council member. Nobody has reached out to me and provided me any documentation, and that's why I'd like it to be entered in the record that, far as I know, there is no petition of a council member trying to stop any Bratwurst Festival. Does anybody have any other old, old business?
I do.
Mrs. DeShawn?
As I've done in previous council meetings, I would like to, at this meeting, acknowledge the final sponsors for the free swim at Allmiller Park Pool. And we had one-day sponsors, the VFW Post 1078, Firelands Federal Credit Union, the Dexter Company, group of citizens/businesses, and they were made up, or it's made up of Noreen Bard, Mark's Homemade Ice Cream, Pay It Forward at the pool, extra money from Kindness Crew and Tracy Zellner, Christmas Forever Village, C&amp;J Jury Farms and Trucking, Sons of the Amvets Number 27, another group of citizens, made up of Ken and Charmaine Teets, Smokey Tobacco and Mindy Hildreth, Stan and Cindy Usee, Pool Pay It Forward, Anonymous, and Deborah Gerhardt, Eagle Crusher, Eagle Crusher's another, and then New Creations Drywall and Restoration.
And we thank those businesses and individuals.
Yep.
And, is there like a final, is there a list that's got every business, every day somewhere?
Bonnie has it.
I think the pool was a huge success this year. I really wanna send a thanks to Jennifer Alonis for stepping up and helping run that. And, um, I think we should, I'd like to see, like, I mentioned this at another meeting, making like a plaque or something that's got, "Pool Year 2024, this is the businesses that sponsored it on this day or whatever." And, um, maybe get something made up so that, I don't know, my suggestion was, you could hang it down here in the lobby or hang it out there at the pool, just so that it doesn't ever get forgotten, that the 2024 pool sponsors. Cause it, that was really a good thing, that, I mean, you, you could be a, a child and go out to the pool all year and not have to pay. Families could all go out there and not have to pay. And I just think it was really good. Any other old business? Mr. Me?
New business.
New business. Let's move on to new business. Mr. Me?
I'd like to put zoning and plating. It's old, it's updated. I'd like to update it eventually.
The whole zoning code and the plating? Didn't we already put that into plating, like, towards the beginning of this year?
I thought you suggested that once before.
Yeah, I, I think it's in the open projects.
I don't have a copy of it in front of me.
You do.
I do.
Excellent.
Plating committee, correct?
Yes.
Um, we have zoning of solar panels, but other than that, no.
Then I will second his motion to put some whole zoning and plating into plating committee.
Mr. Me made the motion, Ms. Sherret seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
You're welcome.
Any other new business? Seeing none. Councilwoman Shireman reached out to me, said she would not be able to make the meeting tonight, and she requested to be excused. So, I would ask for a motion to excuse Councilman Shireman.
So moved.
Mr. Me made the motion, Ms. Dorsh, Moritz seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Ms. Shireman is excused. Referrals, we have coming out of this meeting. Are you gonna read them?
I can, yeah. We have the transfers and appropriations for the purchasing of real property to finance, letter from the Traffic Commission, the Health and Safety, and updating the zoning and plating code to plating.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherret seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. We are adjourned at 8:16, 8:16 PM.